Like call this meeting to order. Happy New Year to everybody. We're so glad you're here. Happy New Year to our community. At this time, we'll have roll call. Mayor Leach and Councilman Adams are excused. Everybody else is here. At this time, we'll have our invocation given by Councilman Judd. And then the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Hatch. If you'd like to rise and join us, please do so.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together for our city council meeting today. We're grateful for the citizens of Sholo and all those great people that helped to keep our city going for the city staff. We're grateful for our first responders, for our police officers and our firefighters, and grateful for all that they do. We're grateful for the moisture we received to help our town to look beautiful and fill our reservoirs. And we ask that thou will be with us at this time as we make decisions and do our city business. That thy Spirit can be with us. And we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Hatch and Councilman Judd. At this time, we'll have the call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city council as a whole. We do have a request under Call to the Public by Mr. William Lewis. If you could come to the public, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Well, it's my first time ever for this, and I'm not here for myself. I'm retired and kind of a part-time grumpy old geezer. And, you know, the kids in my apartment complex, they have inspired me to go on a quest. And I'm sure a lot of other parents of grade schoolers and junior hires around here would, you know, I'm just trying, I have nowhere. I have no clue where to go, what to do, but I figured this would be my first stop. Hopefully, I'd get something from there. Looking for a possibility of a community center of some kind. It's, you know, summer's pretty much, but the winter, these kids are all pent up inside. And they just need somewhere to go spend their energy. And I just, I was just looking for any possibilities I can to help them out. If there's any spaces available that maybe some, I know there's, you know, there's a lot of logistics probably, you know, with the heating and all that, and it's got to come from somewhere. But, man, we got to do something for these kids. They got nothing. There's nowhere for them to go. You know, I mean, the swimming pool, you know, is there limited times, limited days? And there's, you know, there's no gyms or anywhere for them to hang out and play and, you know, make all the noise they want. I don't know, you know, I'm just, I'm just looking for a solution to something that it's a very, very big need, I see. Not just these kids, but I've talked to a lot of parents. You know, I would be willing to volunteer my time to get things started if we could just find a place for them to go. So that's pretty much it.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, if you could provide us with your address and phone number, staff can get back with you. And I think they'll be pleased with the activities that we have in place right now and with the projects that we have in play. So if you'll give them your name, address, and telephone number, they can get back with you.
All right, I can do that.
Just tell us right now.
Oh, 1451 West McNeil, Apartment B7, B as in boy, here in Sholo.
Phone number?
Oh, 928-205-2758.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in our community and our kids.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, folks. If you don't mind if I, you don't mind if I go now?
Nope.
Because normally, I never get out this late.
We locked the door, so somebody will have to let you out.
Okay.
Thank you for coming this evening.
For the kids, I'll get out.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I bless you all.
At this time, we'll go to special events. I'm happy to welcome Vicki Solomon tonight from the Nexus Coalition for Drug Prevention, and she has a presentation for us. Welcome, Vicki.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. I just wanted to come and just give a quick little update on things that Nexus Coalition had been working with and on. I'm the executive director. I've been with the organization for about seven years now. I was born and raised in Hebrew Over guard, and I moved all the way to Snowflake Taylor and been there for about 34 years. And my husband and I got burial plots, so I think we're here to stay, hopefully for quite a while. But I love the White Mountains. We do have some challenges, though, as you guys are very well aware of them. And something I just wanted to share with you real quick is just an update from December 20th. This comes from the DEA. It says DEA National, I'm sorry, DEA announces a seizure of over 379 million deadly doses of fentanyl in 2022. As of 2022 comes to an end, DEA is announcing the seizures of over 50.6 million fentanyl-laced fake pills prescribed, more than 10,000 pounds of fentanyl powder, and they estimate about 379 potential deadly doses. Unfortunately, those pills are getting into our communities, as you guys are very well aware of. And our law enforcement are doing a phenomenal job of helping us try to keep that off of the streets. I've got several different media releases of all the different fentanyl busts that we've had in Navajo County. I won't go over those, but you know, we've got five million here, two million there, three million here. And with that comes in our organization Nexus Coalition. I've got six staff. I'm one of the six. We've got Julie Sherwood, Cheyenne Layton, Stacy Heath, Becky Belknap, and Destiny Hall. And we've got them working in the Sholo Pine Top Lakeside area. And then we also got some grants that cover Snowflake Taylor area. Some of the things that we've been working on is getting into the schools and providing drug prevention education. Some of the things that we provide for them are evidence-based programs, Empowered to be Empowered, Botman Life Skills. We found out that you can't just go talk to kiddos about drug problems. You have to give them life skills on what to do with challenges that come up in life. So this Botman Life Skills is a great evidence-based program that teaches them how to deal with the drugs and alcohol as they are presented with it, hopefully being able to turn those things down. There's also several programs, Avoid Vaping. We have a diversion program where we're trying to encourage principals to go ahead and send them to us for education. So diversion versus suspension. What happens when kiddos get suspended is they go home and probably the environment that they're in, they end up doing more than what they got caught with. So we like to make sure that they get education with that as well. We have wonderful programs that we've worked in the Sholo area as well as the Blue Ridge area. And now we're trying to duplicate those over into the Snowflake Taylor area. One of them is this freshman university. But the two main reasons that we exist is to reduce substance among youth, and then we want to establish and strengthen collaboration. So we work with 12 different sectors in the communities to do that. This is just a real good snapshot. The drug dealers have changed from the blue pills over to the colored pills. And to me, this makes me very angry because if you look at those colored pills, I'm thinking about my grandkids. I've got a six-year-old, I've got an 11-year-old, and they would look at those pills and they wouldn't even think twice about taking them. And what we are finding is that fentanyl, you can have about seven grains of fentanyl, and it could kill somebody. So it doesn't take very much to kill these kiddos, and we're seeing that in our area. This right here is a little snapshot that shows how many grains that is deadly, and this is fentanyl. Some of the things that we do in the summertime is we have a junior leadership academy where we have right around 75 kiddos in White River, Blue Ridge. We're working on trying to get this up and running again in Sholo and then in Snowflake Taylor. And these kids come, and they're chosen by the principals and the teachers at school along with the parents. And maybe they just have some challenges, or they're thinking that they're a little bit at risk with the drug and alcohol. So they come to our program, and these are some of the things that the kiddos talk about. And it's kind of fun. After you do this program, you'll go to Walmart or go to the local grocery store, and kids will come up and remember you because of what you taught them or maybe some of the fun activities that we tie in with them. So here's just a few things that the kiddos talked about. Something that we're working on right now is we are part of a statewide coalition organization called Substance Abuse Coalition Leaders of Arizona, SACLA. And there's about 28 coalitions throughout the state of Arizona. And there was seven chosen to be on the executive committee, and we were actually chosen to be on the executive committee. And we get together, working with the 28 different coalitions, and we applied for a grant, and we've got one. And we did a toolkit with fentanyl, methamphetamines, and naloxone, and we were able to get that out. And anybody can have access to those types of things. And now we're working on one. It's a new toolkit, and it's with marijuana and alcohol and vaping. And we were able to do this in a very short amount of time. So I'm thinking probably we'll have this up and running in about three or four months, when normally it would take a couple of years to be able to get everything together and utilize. But because we've done so well with this as an organization, last year, we got an extra million dollars put into this campaign. And they put it out on the TVs, and they put it out on the radios, and throughout all the state of Arizona, they were getting these same messages, and it was focused on the fentanyl. And now we're working on this marijuana. One other thing that I wanted to talk about is adversity trainings, which is trauma trainings. I've got a magnificent lady. Her name is Stacy Gagnon. She's an expert in trauma field, and she's going to come here in February, and she's going to provide two different sessions for us. Normally, she charges an arm and a leg for this, but for some reason, she likes us, and she's going to come up here and she's going to do it for free. And she's done this several times in the past as well. So we're going to get this information out and see if we can get people to attend this as well. We try to do as much as we can in the communities to help. If there's anything that you guys see that we don't see, I've left a little packet with you of some other information that we have and things that we do. And if you see a need that needs to be met, we would be grateful if you would share our information with them so that we can help the community. And is there any questions?
Would you like to share your phone, the phone number that people can call so that it's on?
Absolutely. It is 928-243-2014. And my email address is vs@vickisolomonncdp@gmail.com.
Thank you, Vicki.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Is there any items that the council would like pulled up before I read the list? Okay. We have a proclamation by the mayor proclaiming January 16th, 2023, as Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service in the city of Sholo. Consideration of acceptance of amendment to grant funds from the governor's office of safety and authorization of associated budget transfers. Consideration of award of purchase of fleet vehicles. Consideration of acceptance of Wayne Berry left station removal. Consideration of minutes of special meeting on December 6th, 2022. Regular meeting, December 6th, 2022, and special meeting of December 14th, 2022.
One second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Yeah?
Thanks.
Thank you. The next item for new business, we have a public hearing. It's an ordinance, 2023-01, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Sholo. Amending the zoning on the property described as APN 2210-16128G from the current C2 general commercial. Zoning conditions to allow for all uses is outlined in the C2 zoning district, including multifamily uses. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Chigaskus, if you'll give us an overview of the situation.
Okay, yeah, I'll give the staff report, and then, as mentioned by the vice mayor, this is a public hearing. So at its regular meeting on July 1st, 2003, the Sholo City Council approved ordinance number 2003-09, conditions attached for a zone change request submitted by Kaia Bab Industries for a master plan commercial project. This development was to include a movie theater, several retail shops, and a restaurant. APN 21016128G was shown on this plan as a proposed parking lot. Condition number two of ordinance number 2003-09 states, quote, "All future development and density associated therewith shall be submitted in substantial conformance with the site plan presented at the open house on June 3rd of 2003," end quote. Based on this condition, any development of the subject property other than a parking lot requires a zoning amendment. Tate Ash has submitted a zone change request to amend the current zoning conditions of ordinance number 2003-09 to remove condition two on the subject property to allow for all uses as outlined in the C2 zoning district, including multifamily uses. The applicant held the neighborhood meeting on October 3rd, 2022. Neighbors expressed concerns regarding traffic, location of city utility lines, private easement, access to the properties to the north and west of the subject property, drainage/irrigation, and location/type of fencing. Following a public hearing at their meeting of December 13th, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to approve the submitted request and forward this recommendation to the city council, subject to specified conditions. Prior to ordinance 2003-09, the subject property was zoned C1, which is Neighborhood Commercial, which is the original zoning for this parcel. The applicant is proposing to build a two-story, eight-unit multifamily dwelling on the subject property. Multifamily dwellings up to 10 units are permitted use in the C2 zone, subject to the requirements of the R2.7, single and multifamily residential 7,000-square-foot zone. Multifamily dwellings over 10 units are a conditional use in the C2 zone, provided they meet the standards of the R2.7 zone. The applicant has indicated that the standard C2 zoning district uses would be possible should apartments not be constructed. Construction plans, including drainage and detention plans, will be required prior to any development. At this time, I'll read the conditions of approval as specified or approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Number one, all developments shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, including building code and fire code. Number two, prior to the commencement of any development on the subject property, engineering improvements, drainage, and grading plans shall be submitted to the city for review and approval. Number three, development of multifamily uses shall comply with the R2.7, single and multifamily residential 7,000-square-foot zoning district standard, including fencing requirements from adjacent properties. A six-foot solid material fence shall be installed for apartment use along the south and west property lines and shall not be placed over any public or private easement. And number four, no buildings or structures shall be built over any city water or sewer mains, and an easement shall be dedicated to the city for these utilities. I would like to go over just a few of the slides that we have available. So the first slide is just a parcel detail showing the subject property. It's the gray property outlined in black. You can see that it borders east Owens on the east side of the subject property, approximately at this location. We've also included a couple aerials of the subject property. Again, the subject property is outlined in red. I would point out that the parcel lines and the aerial aren't 100%. So where you see it exactly on the aerial is not exactly where it is in real life. It actually needs to be slid down a little bit further to where this fence line is. So the subject property does physically abut these two neighboring properties on the south. There is not a gap like it's shown here on the aerial. This is the master plan that was referenced in the condition of ordinance number 2003, in which the zoning was required to comply with the master plan that was presented at the neighborhood meeting. You can see the subject property is outlined in yellow and is indicated for use as a parking lot. The applicant has given us some conceptual ideas of if this was to develop as apartments, what those apartment buildings would look like. Again, this is conceptual. We've not received actual construction drawings along with conceptual lot layout. They are showing the proposed building here on the south of the subject property along with 20 proposed parking spaces. That is a little more than what's required by code. There are required a minimum of two per unit, which would be 16. However, they are adding a few extra in case somebody has a birthday party or something else along those lines. Would point out, you can see this strip along the top. That is a 50-foot-wide easement that is to the benefit of the property to the west and to the north of the subject property. Again, this is a conceptual lot layout. They've not done any engineering or formal studies to determine what type of improvements are required for detention, drainage, that type of thing. That still needs to be done before they could get a building permit. With that, myself as well as the applicant are available for questions. Again, this has been scheduled for a public.
Okay, as stated, we are in public hearing. So is there anybody that would like to address the city council at this time? Seeing no one move forward, we'll close the public hearing. This time, I bring it back to the city council for item 8B, consideration of ordinance number 2023-01, amending the zoning ordinance of the city, amending the zoning on the property described as APN 210-16128G from the current C2 general commercial. Zoning conditions to allow for all uses outlined in the C2 zoning district, including multifamily uses. So we've heard the staff summary from Mr. Chigaskus. Is there any comments or anybody that would like to address the council at this time? Councilman also?
Yes, Justin, I've got a couple of questions. Number four about the buildings and structures and buildup of city water or sewer or anything, do we have quite a bit of stuff in there?
We don't show it on the aerial here. There's not really a lot, but there is a line that runs east-west through here. And there's also one that runs north to south, kind of along Owens. So nothing that really should be impacted by the proposed building footprint. However, there are some city utilities in there. We just want to make sure that we get easements for those city utilities that are in place.
So no matter what they do in their, well, if they made a parking lot, they would have to cover over all of that.
Right. You can do certain things in easements. It depends on how the easements are written and what the easements are for. Generally, with a utility-type easement, that would not prohibit things like a driveway or parking lot or other similar-type improvements, with the understanding that it's at risk. If we need to go in and replace a water line and there's a parking lot over the top of it, we're going to be digging a trench through your parking lot in order to get to our water line. So there's some trade-offs there with the easement.
And you know, the last thing is, I'm glad you can remember back to 2003 because I can't remember far that far back on some of this stuff. So I wait for that you can do that. Now, I know it's just a zone, you'll get it back to the zone thing, but your last slide you showed there, do you have an ingress and egress or just one in and out?
Again, this is just conceptual at this time. Nothing's been approved. There's been no formal reviews that have taken place on this. They are proposing just one single driveway coming in and out to the project. This has been forwarded to the fire district. They had no issues as far as emergency access and things like that to the building. Now, again, I say that going back to what I said previous. They still need to submit regardless of what they do on this property, whether it's multifamily or they come in with just an office complex or something like that. They would still need to submit those for review and approval comments. So at this point, yeah, we've got a conceptual drawing that shows this is what they're proposing, but there's been no approvals given to say that this is actually what will be constructed there.
Thank you very much for that.
It still has to go through the entire process.
Correct. All right. Thank you, sir.
So Justin, following up on that, the conceptual plans that are presented here, do they meet currently the prescribed requirements under the ordinance?
So on the surface, I would say yes. I mean, they're showing eight units. They're showing the required amount of parking spaces. It would appear that they have the minimum amount of open space, although that's not specifically stated on here. Again, where we don't know is they've not spent the money. They've not spent the time to get engineering plans done, and how will that affect this proposed layout? Again, this is really the matter before the council this evening isn't so much the design and approval of the draft or the conceptual plan. Really, what's being requested is the removal of the condition that requires that this be a parking lot to allow for it to develop as either apartments or another commercial-type use. If it develops as apartments, it will probably be fairly similar to what you see on the slide here in front of you.
One more question, Justin. When you had a public hearing on this or anything, I mean, people concerned about what's going on with that parking lot now? To change it back or anything else? Anybody complain about it?
So we've had two meetings. Well, the applicant held the neighborhood meeting in October, which staff attended. There weren't concerns, at least in my opinion, related to parking lot versus commercial development. The concerns that were brought forth at the neighborhood meeting were just more general concerns related to any development of the property. How are they going to take care of their drainage? What are they doing with the utility lines that are already in place? What are they doing with the easement that's there? Is that going to be, is that going to remain protected? Those types of questions. At the city, not the city council, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which took place beginning of December, we did have an individual who did get up and speak and again echoed many of those same concerns, wanting just again to make sure that any development that moves forward does address those types of issues. You know, that we're not going to leave some loose ends out there, that we're going to have a problem with drainage or utilities or access or any of those types of things.
Totally agree. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Justin. So I'm looking at the 2003 rendering, and it looks like that, I know this isn't the subject. Yeah, I think it was just the one you had there. It looks like the property across the street has developed differently than this one has been rendered. Did, were those stipulations on that property across and what happened previously? I guess, I wasn't on the council, I guess, when that property was developed. So what was, what happened there with them not being in substantial conformance with? I think there's a road now that kind of, a city-maintained road that cuts through there and stuff, so.
So we have the building on the corner, which is identified as letter C. We also have another building, which is directly south of it. We also have another building, which is directly south of it, which essentially is, you're taking the building that would have been letter D and sliding it over on the property.
Okay.
So the densities and things really remain the same.
But we didn't have to go through a process to change it at all?
Not really at that point. Where we run up against it is unfortunately, this is clearly shown as a parking lot.
Yeah.
And we have a condition that says if you do something different, you gotta come back to the council to get it changed. So that's why we're here this evening.
Okay. Great. That's all I have, Vice Mayor.
I can see where the citizens around that area would be concerned with the development and, and making sure that the drainage and easements, et cetera, are all, all met and in conformance with their, their requirements. However, I, I do see this as sort of an overreach with tying the hands of the developer and the property owner as well. So I'd like to make a motion at this time to. Real quick, Vice Mayor. I'll have me read the title. Before I do that, we'll ask the city clerk, all to read the ordinance by title only, as all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. City of Sholo ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Sholo, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance of the city, title nineteen, amending the zoning on property located on the southeast corner of section twenty, township ten north, range twenty-two east of the Gila and Salt River Meridian, Navajo County, Arizona, more particularly described as AP number two-ten-dash-sixteen-dash-one-two-eight-G to allow for all uses out, as outlined in the C two general commercial zoning district, including multifamily uses. Thank you.
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh one. Councilman Clark, second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, city clerk. The next item on the agenda is consideration of acceptance of McNeil Acres and Eleventh Street Sewer Replacement, City of Sholo Project S eleven twenty-two. Mr. Hamasa.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. At its regular meeting on April fifth, twenty twenty-two, the city council ordered a construction contract, the patch underground excavating in the amount not to exceed one million, five-hundred-four-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-five dollars for the McNeil Acres and Eleventh Street Sewer Replacement Project. The scope of that work included installing approximately eight thousand linear feet of new eight-inch PVC sewer main, twenty-nine new concrete manholes, new sewer services, and replacing the existing asphalt as removed. The McNeil Acres subdivision is one of the older subdivisions in the city. During construction, additional unknown sewer taps were discovered that required connection to the new sewer main, and some required grade adjustment. Due to the extremely poor condition of the asphalt in this subdivision, the existing asphalt would break apart and ravage, crack near the trench line where the new sewer main was being installed. As a result, large asphalt patches need to be replaced. Now, the city's current budget includes funding for the reconstruction of the McNeil Acres subdivision. However, this work is now scheduled until the summer of twenty twenty-three. The larger asphalt patches were installed to ensure the roadways would hold together through the winter and be ready for reconstruction next year. These changes resulted in additional asphalt patch cost of eighty-six thousand, nine-hundred-ninety-two dollars and thirteen cents, bringing the final project cost to one million, five-hundred-ninety-one-thousand-one-hundred-seventeen dollars and thirteen cents. Staff recommends accepting the McNeil Acres and Eleventh Street Sewer Replacement Project, City of Sholo Project S one-one-two-two, authorizing the associated budget transfers, approving the eighty-six thousand, nine-hundred-ninety-two dollars and thirteen cent change order for the final cost, as I mentioned before, of one million, five-hundred-ninety-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and thirteen cents. We also like to release the retainage and initiate the two-year warranty period. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hamasa. Councilman Osot.
Can you explain just a little bit so for us and then also for the public what, what the asphalt patch really is?
Yes, you bet. So these sewer mains and a majority of the subdivision are installed down the middle of the road. In order to access the sewer to replace it, we had to cut the asphalt, usually aim for, aiming for about a four-foot total cut to get your, to get the new pipeline in, and then you patch that back. However, you can see as you drive through the suburbs and now after the fact, these patches widen and sporadically go all over just because of the failing asphalt as we work through this, this subdivision with the sewer main in.
You know, because I know down there towards the end of Eighth Street, that sewer line, I think, is higher than that one house over on that, on that one side. So did you lower any of that stuff?
Yeah, we were able to correct some of those, those things with the, the new main installation. We, I think that main lowered about two feet from the original to get that sewer to work right there at Eighth and Owens. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hamasa, can you please clarify for me that, you know, some of this street work is budgeted for twenty twenty-three? Is that where we're transferring funds from? So it's really already a budgeted project, we're just doing it a little bit earlier with.
Yes, I believe.
Making the road straight.
I believe the past work was coming from general improvements of streets and sewer because it just had, it was more street work that needed to be done just to put this back together for the winter. The, the, the large overlay project remains in the budget for next summer. With these really, really large projects, they're, they have to be two-year projects. We can't do the sewer and the paving in the one, in one year. We just run out of time. So we budget, budget for it. It's in the budget currently. It'll be done this summer when we get weather to, to asphalt paving.
Thank you for that, the replication.
Bet.
Any other comments?
One more, one more, Vice Mayor. So all the pipe, the clay pipe that we had replaced and everything else, are we, did we leave any in there or do we have patches of clay to PVC or what do we have?
There is one section of pipe that's probably about forty, about sixty feet long that a house got built over the top of it, a long time ago. And so that, that pipe has already been sleeved and lined internally, but everything else in that subdivision now is plastic.
So we don't look at any foreseen problems right away with it and everything else, and everybody's pretty happy now?
Yes.
Except for the road?
Except for the road. Actually, what you'll see is the water line is going to start on Owens here this week. That's the next underground phase. That's just along the Owens piece. And that's all the underground infrastructure in this area. In summertime, we can fix it both.
Thank you, Shane.
Bet.
I have a motion. Motion by Councilman Clark.
Can we read it?
I move to accept the McNeil Acres and Eleventh Street Sewer Replacement, City of Sholo Project number S dash eleven twenty-two, authorize the associated budget transfers, approve the eighty-six thousand, nine-hundred-ninety-two dollars and thirteen cents change order for a final cost of one million, five-hundred-ninety-one-thousand-one-hundred-seventeen dollars and thirteen cents, and release the retainage and initiate the two-year warranty period.
I have a second. Councilman Hatch. All those in favor? Say aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hamasa. Next item on the agenda is summary, summary of current events. Councilman Hatch, did you have anything?
We don't.
Councilman Clark. Jed, Osot.
Yes, I want to wish everybody, I, I hope everybody had a great and, and happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Had a great time at the, dropped the deuce of clubs and right across, right in front of the council chambers here. There was a big attendance and just handing out the two-dollar bills and, and stuff like that, talking to people. There was a lot of people from different, I think the furthest one way was Alabama, and then we had some from Texas and Washington and a lot of Phoenix and Tucson and Casa Grande. So it's neat to see that even though this is a small town, there's some neat things happening and people are coming up that, that want to see it. So it was a great time. It was just a little windy, but even the city manager was out there for a little while between, I think, eleven fifty-five and twelve. I think he was there. So, but anyway, we had a great time. Hot chocolate was gone. They had over ten gallons of hot chocolate, but everybody was laughing, joking, having a good time. And, and I just want to thank staff for all the stuff they had to do with the fire pits and putting everything together and, and all the people from the aquatic centers did the inside stuff and put all the decorations up. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all, a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I too would like to express my appreciation to our staff for all that they do. I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and hope everybody had a very Merry Christmas. I have to say that I, I feel incredibly blessed and proud to live in this community. The things that our staff do and put forth for our citizens and our visitors is just incredible. It surpasses many of the larger, larger cities and communities, and I just can't thank them enough for all that they do. And so, thank you. City Mayor.
Yes, Happy New Year. I did, I stayed there longer than five minutes. Okay, we're beginning the process to prepare the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, in addition to a budget study session with city council on Tuesday, January seventeenth at six P M. We're hosting a town hall budget meeting specifically for citizen input on Thursday, January nineteenth at six P M. here at the council chambers. And we do have a full listing of all the meeting dates related to our budget. It's on our website at sholowaz.gov. Anyone wants, who wants to recycle a Christmas tree will have until Sunday, January eighth to drop it off with all lights and decorations removed at Frontier Park Parking Lot on Ninth Place. The trees will be taken to Novo Power and Snowflake for use as biomass fuel. And in public works projects, construction continues on the East Huning improvements. The weather's kind of slowed things down, but sidewalks have been poured. The contractor hopes to pave the south side when the snow melts. The city's contractor will, as was mentioned earlier, will be working on water main installation on East Owens. And ADOT's continuing their work on Highway two sixty at the Sholo Lake intersection, and they're hoping to be able to complete that intersection improvement as weather permits. And as always, we thank everyone for their patience on, for these projects. We have other projects going on, but these are some of the, a couple of the major ones. And we want to thank all our citizens for the patience as our crews dealt with the snow removal and icy conditions the last few days. Our city employees, especially those in public works and public safety, continue to work diligently and around the clock to ensure everyone's safety, and we thank them for the efforts. They did a great job this, through this storm. Thank you.
Say aye. Thank you. Scheduling of meetings. Anybody have a meeting they need to schedule?
As I mentioned, you'll have a budget study session. You're right before your next council meeting on January seventeen, six o'clock.
Okay. Seeing no other business on our agenda tonight. Again, Merry, Happy New Year. Thank you for attending. Have a good night.
Thank you.